Regular scheduled meeting of the Village of Riverside Board of Trustees Thursday, November 2, 2023. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we have another public hearing.
I have to call roll again, President Pollock. We have to call roll.
Oh, call roll, sorry.
Sorry. President Pollock.
Here.
Trustee Clarity.
Here.
Trustee Marcheska.
Here.
Trustee Mateo.
Here.
Trustee Evans.
Here.
Trustee Gallegos.
Here.
Manager Francis.
Here.
Attorney Pickroll.
Here.
Also, President Clerk Soul.
Thank you. We have a quorum, a public hearing concerning the intent of the President and Board of Trustees to sell not to exceed $1.4 million general obligation limited tax bonds for the purpose of financing various capital projects in and for the Village of Riverside. I hereby call to order the public hearing to be held at 7:00 PM on the second day of November 2023 in Room 4 of the Riverside Township Hall, 27 Riverside Road, Riverside, Illinois, concerning the intent of the Village Board to sell not to exceed $1.4 million general obligation limited tax bonds for the purpose of financing capital projects in and for the Village or to order. All persons desiring to be heard will have an opportunity to present written or oral testimony. Are there any public comments regarding this hearing? Any comments or questions from the trustees? Seeing there are no public comments, we will, I guess we will ask for a motion to adjourn. I'm sorry, Director Johns.
Good evening. I wanted to acknowledge that the Village published notice of this hearing in the October 25th edition of the Landmark per the requirements of the Bond Issuance Notification Act. I also wanted to talk a little bit about the bond issuance before you tonight. These general obligation limited tax bonds are going to be utilized for capital projects focusing on facility improvements for the Village.
Thank you. And now, any questions or comments from the public? Any additional comments from the trustees? Would note that if there are any oral testimony, written comments, or any public comments concerning the proposed issuance of the bonds, seeing there are none, all persons desiring to be heard have been given an opportunity to present oral and written testimony with respect to the proposed issuance of bonds. There being no further discussion or questions, would ask for a motion, a second, to adjourn the public hearing.
Motion is made.
Motion by trustee Gallegos, second.
Second.
Second by trustee Marcheska. Any discussion of the motion? If not, Clerk Soul, please call the roll.
President Pollock.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Trustee Marcheska.
Aye.
Trustee Mateo.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion is approved. Hearing is adjourned. This evening, we have the welcome opportunity to consider the appointment of Elizabeth Cosse as a Village trustee to fill the vacancy with a term to expire in May 2025. Following the September 21 Village Board meeting, a vacancy was created on the Village Board. Former Village President Joseph Ballerine resigned as he purchased a home out of state. The Village Board then appointed me as Village President, at which time I resigned my post as a Village trustee. Tonight, I am recommending the appointment of Elizabeth Cosse to fill the current vacancy with a term that will expire in May of 2025. Cosse has been an active volunteer in Riverside. She has served on the Parks and Recreation Board for over 10 years with five years as chairperson. Elizabeth has also served as a volunteer on Abe's School PTA and Riverside Junior Women's Charity. I would ask for a motion and a second to appoint and swear an Elizabeth Cosse as a Village trustee to fill a vacancy with a term to expire in May 2025.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Motion by trustee Evans, second by trustee Mateo. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Clerk Soul.
President Pollock.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Trustee Marcheska.
Aye.
Trustee Mateo.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Motion is approved. Elizabeth, if you'll join me. Repeat after me. Raise your right hand. I, Elizabeth Cosse.
I, Elizabeth Cosse.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties of the office of Village trustee.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties of the office of Village trustee.
For the Village of Riverside, Illinois, to the best of my ability.
For the Village of Riverside, Illinois, to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. You can sit down. Sit down. Thank you. I just wanted to add that the Village Board spent a lot of time, myself included, in reviewing and considering candidates to fill this position. I got some incredibly valuable input from the trustees. We discussed this a couple of times in closed session in terms of the process, and we were very fortunate that Elizabeth volunteered to step up and fill this position. I really appreciate when we have residents who volunteer and commit to this village and spend a lot of time, a lot of volunteer hours, working in support of the village, and then are willing to step up and take a leadership role on the Board of Trustees. So, thank you, Elizabeth, and thank you, trustees. Next, under President's report, I have a proclamation. This one is near and dear to my heart as a city planner. November 8 is World Town Planning Day. And the proclamation reads as follows. World Town Planning Day, whereas on November 8 of each year, planners and communities all over the world come together to celebrate World Town Planning Day, and whereas Argentinean Professor Carlos Maria de la Poilhers, a graduate of the Institute of Urbanism in Paris, started World Town Planning Day in Buenos Aires in 1949. And whereas the Village of Riverside holds a unique place in the history of city planning, having been imagined and designed by North America's first city planner, Frederick Law Olmsted. And whereas World Town Planning Day is celebrated in 30 countries on four continents each November, and is a special day to recognize and promote the role of planners and planning in creating healthy, prosperous communities, and whereas all are invited to share their knowledge and leading practices and learn from international success stories in housing for all, building city resilience, planning responses to urban crisis, inclusive and ambitious climate measures, and other areas that would enhance U.S. planning practice, and whereas good planning improves the lives of people and benefits society at large, creating places to live, work, and play together. And now, therefore, be it resolved that I, President J. Douglas Pollock, do hereby proclaim November 8, 2023, World Town Planning Day in the Village of Riverside, dated this second day of November 2023. We need to do a motion? No. So, that is World Town Planning Day, and I want to thank our planner on staff, Ann Siren, who is our city planner, and is, we're proud to have Ann, and this proclamation goes to her as well as all other city planners in all towns that value city planning. So, thank you for that. Managers' report. Manager Francis.
Thank you, President Pollock. I have one item this evening to report on. I'm happy to announce to the public that on October 31, Standard &amp; Poor reaffirmed the Village's bond rating of AAA+ for both our outstanding bonds that we have, haven't fully paid off, and also for the new bonds that we had the public hearing on that will be issued. I wanted to thank Director Johns for her work and diligence in the financial and capital planning of the Village. I wanted to also thank the Village Board and the Village's executive staff for all of your work with Director Johns to ensure that we have good, sound financial policies, that we manage our budgets to derive surpluses, and overall that we are good stewards of the Village's finances. However, I will say that we are still, our ultimate goal is to claim back our AAA status. And Standard &amp; Poor have told us that if we continue to fund at the aggressive level, that it could be a future outcome for us. So, we had our AAA status from, I believe it was 2014 through 2019, and so we're working hard. Not that AAA+ is an excellent rating, and we should be very proud of it. It's the low level, just below AAA. So, that is all I have this evening.
Thank you, Manager Francis.
To be clear, we're AA+.
We are AA+. Correct. Not AAA.
Thank you.
Thank you, Manager Francis, and our Finance Director, Karen Johns, and all the other Village staff who worked so hard to make sure that we maintain, and I am confident that they will do all they need to do to help us get to that next level. Consent agenda. Clerk Soul, will you read the consent agenda?
Approved voucher list of bills, November 2, 2023. Review and file finance, September 2023 report. Approved Village Board of, Village of Riverside and Riverside Public Library, 2024 budget public hearing minutes, October 19, 2023. Approved Village Board of Trustees regular meeting minutes, October 19, 2023. Approved Village Board of Trustees executive session meeting minutes, October 19, 2023. Review and file Parks and Recreation Board rescheduled regular meeting minutes, September 26, 2023. Historical Commission regular meeting minutes, September 18, 2023. And Board of Police and Fire Commissioners, February 20 and May 9, 2023 minutes. Review and file 2024 Board and Commission meeting schedule. Resolution authorizing the Village manager to execute a contract with Municipal GIS Partners Incorporated and issue a purchase order for a total amount not to exceed $46,064.04 for 2024 geographic information system services. A resolution waiving competitive bidding and authorizing the Village manager to enter into various purchase orders for fiscal year 2023. And a resolution authorizing the Village manager to waive competitive bidding and execute a sales agreement with Sesco Safety for a total amount not to exceed $34,315.50 for the installation of a fall arrest system at the Public Works facility.
Do any of these items need to be removed? Either the public or trustees have any reason to remove an item, seeing that none are to be removed, I would ask for a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by trustee Gallegos, second by trustee Marcheska. Any discussion on the motion?
Who made all the motions in my absence last month?
It got done. Clerk Soul, please call the roll.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Trustee Cosse.
Aye.
Trustee Marcheska.
Aye.
Trustee Mateo.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Thank you. And I apologize, I skipped over resident comments for non-agenda items. Are there, is there anyone from the public in attendance who would like to address the Village Board on a topic that is not on the agenda? While we go through agenda items, you'll be given an opportunity to comment at that time, but if there are any comments on non-agenda items, now is the time for it. Seeing none, we will move on. Department Board and Commission reports. Are there any Department Board or Commission reports this evening? Seeing that there are none, next is the pending business discussion. Irma Optional Deductible Program, Director Johns.
Good evening. Previously, in the budget presentation, we discussed the ability to move from a $50,000 deductible to a $100,000 deductible based on some Irma analysis, which I will be presenting tonight. I wanted to share that utilizing the $50,000 deductible has saved the Village $112,812 from 2013 to 2022 versus the next lower deductible level. If the Village had elected $100,000 deductible during that time period, the Village would have saved an additional $136,815. Want to make sure that you're aware that this does not include the cost of in-house claims, which is approximately $10,000 a year. Moving to the $100,000 deductible does increase the operational risk for out-of-pocket expenses. However, in the past five years, we've had six claims that have surpassed the $50,000 deductible mark. Two of those claims have also exceeded the $100,000 deductible. We also recently got notice from Irma that our 2023, sorry, our 2024 contribution will be increasing dramatically from the 2023 contribution. This is due to a large claim year coming on and a relatively small claim year rolling off, our five-year average. So, I wanted to discuss with the Board again their, if they would like to transition to $100,000 deductible for 2024. Staff would be in favor of this recommendation if it would be coupled with a policy allowing for utilization of Irma reserves for those claims between $50,000 and $100,000 based on year-to-date operational trends.
Questions, comments from trustees?
If staff recommend it, then I'm comfortable with it as well. They see the numbers every single day.
Just.
Anyone not comfortable? I think we have consensus.
Okay. For the preparation of this policy, I wanted to get a little bit more board feedback. Conceptually, we can do it two different ways. We can bring it to the Board every time that the excess surplus would be utilized, or we can approve at a staff level and include in the monthly financial reports.
The latter.
Notification's fine with me as well.
Would the Board like to amend the 2024 budget for additional contribution or to use reserves held at Irma? Since the Board has selected the $100,000 deductible, a budget revision is recommended and not to use additional surplus.
Any opinions from the Board? Any thoughts? Any objections to the staff recommendation?
None here.
Okay. I will prepare that policy and present to the Board at a meeting before the end of the year.
Thank you. And I would point out that we, for the public, we did talk more about this at previous meetings about the Irma deductible, and it's something that Village Board's very aware of and has spent some time discussing that. So, thank you, Director Johns. Manager Francis.
If I may, it has served the Village very well, moving to the $50,000 deductible. That is how we built up the $1.4 million that we have sitting there in excess surplus, which, if you look at the 10-year average, the rate of return, not, including last year, which was a bad year for rate of return for Irma, it's approximately 7%, which is what we, we cannot get that in the general market, just investing on our own. So, it has served the Village very well, and so we will continue to be good stewards of these funds.
Thank you. New business. Update on potential train station improvements. Public Works Director, Dan Tab.
Good evening, everyone. On August 17, at a board meeting, we had a CFP discussion, and one of the items on the CFP discussion for this year was train station improvements. And there was, you know, we spoke about the inability to install some outlets on the walls that we've been talking about for a number of years now. The general consensus is we can't install outlets in a practical way in the walls without disturbing the wainscoting in there and putting wire mold on the wall. So, as part of that discussion, somebody mentioned the possibility of installing them on the floor. So, we went out there with Core Construction, who we worked with on a regular basis, with their electrician. We looked at it, and we got into the crawl space, and it is indeed an option to install in-floor outlets. I would propose that we install them, at least to begin, on the western portion of the train station where we don't have currently any outlets. On the eastern portion, for those that are familiar with it, we do have outlets in the wall that were there previously installed from the cafe that was there, and those are still in the wall. So, I'm proposing six outlets on the western portion, three on each side. They would be flush-mounted in the floor. We'd have to run two circuits back to the breaker panel in the basement, and the cost of that is approximately $10,000 to do. We currently have a line item in the budget this year for 2023 of $18,000 for train station improvements, so this would be included in that budget. If the Board wishes, we could add two to the eastern half in the floor, one on each side, which might provide a little bit of flexibility for vendors on that side of the train station for events that we have, and this would eliminate some of the, well, the majority of the extension cords. But we do have some on the wall, so if we don't want to spend any additional money, we can go with that. But while they're out there, this would be the cheapest time to install one on each side of the floor on the eastern half as well. So, I just want to kind of put that out there. I would anticipate if we were to elect to do all eight, six on the west, two on the east, we'd still fall underneath that, the budget amount for this year. So, that's something to think about. In addition to that, at the time, the Board requested for a little bit of data with regards to train station rentals to kind of offset this, you know, there's a lot of money to install some outlets. Clerk Soul can provide a little bit of information with regards to the rentals.
Yeah, so we've had approximately nine rentals in 2022, only six of which generated revenue, six private parties, about $1,500 bucks. And then, in 2023 so far, we've had six rentals with five of them generating revenue in approximately $950 in total. So, that's one item, and then the separate item as part of this, this discussion, we're updating the train station policy to prevent event goers from moving the benches within the train station in any way. They're pretty heavy, and if moved improperly, they've, they can scratch the terrazzo floor. So, previously, the policy allowed people to move them within the train station. Now, Public Works will move them for a nominal fee. So, that's just one change to the policy.
Look to the trustees. There's two questions, one on the electrical, one on the policy change.
Are you asking for a consensus on the six outlets?
Six versus eight?
I'm fine with the six.
There's some questions. No, I'm completely fine with the fee to move the benches. Does the installation of the floor outlets disturb the terrazzo flooring?
We'd be drilling through it.
So, I, so we're saving the wainscoting, but affecting the flooring?
The, there would be a hole through the floor, which would.
Six holes.
There would be six or eight holes.
Maybe eight holes in the terrazzo floor.
And then you'd run conduit through that, which would be attached to a flush-mounted outlet with little flip covers to protect the outlet. Sure, we're all familiar with those. But yes, you would have to core the terrazzo floor in order to get into the crawl space to run the conduit back to the breaker panel.
And the purpose of that is to minimize the use of extension cords that are serving the events that are taking place in the space?
That is correct.
Okay. So, from a pure dollar standpoint, I understand it is important for the community to have spaces. That is something that matters to us. Not every event is something that we charge for, but on a pure dollar basis, by my math, if we just do the six outlets, it's an eight-year break even to put in.
Correct.
Six floor holes in the terrazzo flooring.
That is correct.
To save the wainscoting.
Well, yes.
I like wainscoting. Just to be clear, I'm not trying to offend the wainscoting.
Yeah, the in-wall installation has basically been ruled out by three or four electricians.
Oh, well, that's helpful.
Yeah.
Just to reiterate, places for gathering are important to a community. I do think we have other places for gathering. I don't, I'm a little uncomfortable with the concept that we have a safety issue in places where we're bringing in community events, so I see the purpose here. Guess my thought is that if the types of events we're having in the space are not suited for the space, perhaps they should be utilizing other spaces rather than a pretty costly repair for that purpose. Or in the alternative, can we look at what we're charging for the space? Have we looked at that? Is that, is it consistent with what others charge for a similar space? Again, it's not always linear, it's not necessarily always perfectly correlated to revenue, but I am a little troubled by the cost relative to the fairly small amount of events we have in the space.
I have a slightly different take on the issue, and that is that I consider $10,000 to bring a, one of our very, very few gathering spaces and event spaces in Riverside up to a fully functional standpoint. I consider $10,000 to be a very small price to pay for that compared to the price of building or creating a new space where there is none. I don't think that we have sufficient community spaces here in Riverside for the types of events that people would like to have and that we really need to have ultimately in order to be a successful, thriving community. So, you know, I, you know, my background is in preservation partially. It's also partially in tourism, and, you know, so I understand the importance of making historic spaces flexible and relevant for use. So, I would be in favor of the installation of the six outlets for $10,000.
Could we not, for events that are taking place in the space, prohibit the use of extension cords? There seems to be outlets on the east side. Are the, and we're saying those are insufficient for modern use, right? There's not enough there to plug in the DJ equipment and the coffee machine.
There's been, there's been uses in the train station where we've had some numerous tables set up for like a vendor-style type event, and they would all, all the extension cords would be directed towards one side of the building, even for those set up on the east end. They're in the wall. As far as the north, south walls, they would all have to navigate some extension cords to the same bank of outlets.
Trustees over here.
I, thank you for looking at an alternative approach here. This is still a discussion point, but why six? Is that to match the number of wall outlets on the east side, or is it covered?
Equidistant from each other.
Sorry?
They would be spaced equidistant from each other along either the north and south wall. If you had tables set up, it would be a short run from a cord off of whatever.
Okay.
To alleviate the use of extension cords, that's kind of what we're getting at.
And as you pointed out, trustee Clarity, it will pay for itself eventually, and maybe we'll have more revenue-generating events now that it's more usable. Yeah.
Trustee Evans.
Just as somebody who has volunteered to bring events to the stage, and I know that Elizabeth and Jill can attest that trying to cobble together the electricity to, you know, do everything you want to do, like keep, keep food warm, keep things gold, whatever, we need a lot of, we tend to need a lot of electricity, and so there just tends to be at our nice, we try to make an event nice, but it just tends to be a lot of, you know, cords taped all over the floor. So, I just think it would make it, for people who, who know what the space could be used for and have used the space before, I think it's clear why we need it. I don't know if you've been to many.
I've been to many events in the train station.
Okay. So, just from somebody who has, you know, used the train station for events and seen the need for a little. who, who know what this space could be used for and have used this space before, I think it's clear why we need it. I don't know if you've been to many?
I've been to many events in the train station.
Okay. So, just from somebody who has, you know, used the train station for events and seen the need for a little bit more access to electricity, I support the expenditure.
Trustee Gallagos, anything to add?
As do I. Yeah, no, we need to modernize that unregulated space of our historic train station. So, yeah, I'm in favor of the six outlets.
I would just, just, oh, sorry, sorry. You done?
I am, yeah, no.
So, I would just say, I, I think that from my perspective, if we're going to use it, we either limit its use, as Trustee Clarity said, and prohibit extension cords, or we do this, because it's a public safety issue. And I imagine the six, the number six, the electrician probably looked at the building codes and said, the spacing of outlets is, should be such and such to avoid the need for extension cords. So, to me, the question on, on that comes down to, do you want the facility to be a full-access facility, or do you want to limit it to smaller events that don't require a lot of electricity?
If I can add something really quick. Oops, sorry, Megan. I just wanted to provide context.
Sorry, just to go back to our point, when was the last time we benchmarked the charges for the space? Again, I believe in community gathering spaces, and I'm not saying to try to get top dollar, but to the extent that we haven't in a while looked at. These seem very reasonable to me, and we have competing spaces in the village that may or may not be consistent with that. That just brings down the break even on the expenditure.
So, I believe the last time we adjusted it was when we created the policy and, and structured it in such a way, which would have been in 2016.
Nothing is still the same price as it was in 2016. Not even electrical outlets.
That's accurate.
Are you suggesting we direct staff to look into that for us?
If the board is amenable, I think some gentle benchmarking on our rates just to stay current. Again, I don't want to charge $1,000 an hour to use the train station. I want people to be able to gather and have our events and it not be cross-prohibitive, but we are, we are maintaining the space and putting in improvements.
Staff is currently working on a fee survey for 2024, so I will make sure that's one of the questions we ask in our fee survey.
Right.
Excellent.
Trustee Evans?
I just wanted to also note that in our C4 planning process, places for gathering is a priority. It's came from our discussions with the community. And so, you sort, I sort of, with that knowledge, want to encourage and increase access to our, the few larger spaces that we have.
So, I think it's fair to say that, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I'm not sure if I'm allowed to talk at my first. So, just two questions. One, I don't feel like we got your opinion on the matter. Like, I feel like you presented the information, but do you have an opinion?
I don't.
Okay. It didn't seem like you did, but I just wanted to ask that. And again, I don't know if I'm allowed to ask this. I haven't been fully on-boarded yet. But I do know that we rent the scout cabin on a regular basis, and we do get income from the scout cabin on a regular basis. Ron, can, am I allowed to ask Ron how much we charge for, since I don't remember offhand?
Okay. It depends on the usage somewhat, but a general pricing is, it's $250 for a six-hour block at a time.
Okay. So, similar to what we're talking about for the train station?
Yeah, we also rent out the water tower space and the Quincy space, same pricing, but that's broken down in three-hour, $125 increments.
Great.
The swim pool also has a space rental that's newer to the community since 2016, which would be a good comparable. And maybe, I don't know, do we charge for rentals in the village hall?
Township does.
Are you allowed to rent it if you're not a member?
I believe so. Don't quote me on that, but I believe so.
Clerk Sol, did you have something to add?
Yeah, sorry. I just wanted to add that the events that are utilizing the power in the train station the most are the events we don't charge for currently. So, your hop stops, your Riverside Arts Weekend, Holiday Stroll, all events that are either run by nonprofits or in coordination with us. Those are the ones that are bringing in generators and stuff. These private parties listed here, they don't care. They're not using the outlets at all, from what I've heard from them. So, just thought that helped.
Thank you. I believe there appears to be a consensus to install the six-floor outlets. I did not hear any objection to the policy change.
I actually have a couple of questions on the policy change. Sorry. What is the fine for moving the benches? If you move them yourself, what's the fine?
I don't know, Ethan. What have we been charging for a fine?
Yeah, let me just, it's going to be 50 bucks. 50 bucks.
Just, just a suggestion, but I think that probably the fine for moving the benches yourself should be more than the cost to have them moved beforehand.
Oh, yeah.
Sort of to incentivize people not to, not to move the benches themselves. Just a thought on that. And then, what is the housekeep, what is the housekeeping charge when you clean before or after?
That's when somebody rents it out.
Right.
Typically, we would hope that somebody would clean up after themselves.
Sure.
But in the event that they don't, we come in and clean it.
Okay, but it says that the space is cleaned before the event, too. Is that correct?
It's made, it is, it's cleaned throughout the week.
Okay, so it's, there's not an additional cleaning done for, okay. And have we ever passed the housekeeping prep on to the, to people?
Yeah.
Okay.
We, appears we have consensus to, does anyone want to make a motion, or are you comfortable with just the consensus?
I think it's just discussion.
Okay. So, the direction to the staff is to proceed with the six outlets and the policy change with the tweaking of the fine for moving benches.
All right, thank you.
All right. Anything else on that? Moving on. Where were we? Oh, budget update. Director Johns?
Good evening again. I know the Village Board has spent a lot of time going through, starting the budget process with the capital improvement plan, through the financial forecast and the draft budget. I just wanted to bring a couple staff-recommended changes to the board to incorporate in the 2024 budget document, also with one 2023 budget revision. Currently, the board did approve the purchase of two squad cars. One of those squad cars was, was original, that was originally approved in June of 2022 to replace squad number 59. We would like to redistribute that vehicle and give that one to replace vehicle number 1604 for Director Tab. His vehicle is experiencing additional repair costs currently, so we would like to do that switch for the 2023 budget. For the 2024 budget, we are now going to budget for the replacement of squad 59 instead of 1601. This will be a capital rollover from the 2023 budget. We will add the spongy moth treatment discussed at the last board meeting for 15,000. The village has also been able to hire an in-house building inspector, which will have a slight budget differential of approximately $20,000 from utilizing contractual, but will gain a lot more efficiencies for staff. We recently received the 2024 quote for the GIS consortium. This will increase the IT budget and the waterfront budget by $757 apiece. And the Berkeley Green Alley improvements will be added to Business District One budget for 225,000. Discussed earlier in this board meeting, I will do this update every meeting until we adopt the budget, but I will also add the Irma budget amendment that we discussed, as well as the fall arrest system.
Thank you. Trustees, any questions, comments? All looks good. Thank you, Director Johns.
Thank you.
Trustee reports. Do we have a cross-community climate collaborative C4 update? Trustee?
We absolutely do, yes. So, in your packet, you should have received a draft color presentation of the 32 initiatives that the C4 team has culled from all of the public input that we've received since our Road to 2050 event in January by reaching out to the community through events and surveys, subsequent follow-up surveys, and then identified through further GAF analysis where we weighed those community input ideas and compared them with what Riverside's current and projected needs are, you know, on a going-forward basis in light of climate change. So, I, I hope that you've had an opportunity to review these initiatives. In addition to simply, you know, listing them out and, you know, for your review and consideration, Ashley Monroe has prepared a wonderful document that's at your place, which is 14 pages full of, it's, it's wonderful, and I know you haven't had a chance to fully review it yet. But it, it takes each of the initiatives and basically sets forth a statement of need for why each of the initiatives was proposed and recommended, what the problem is, what each of them are intended to address, and then also some proposed actions that could be adopted by implementers, be it the village, be it, you know, a major stakeholder like the library, or a school district, or the business community. So, our plan is to ask each of you to get back to Ashley, Kristin, and I with feedback on this list of recommendations and draft supporting document. We would love to be able to get this out into the hands of those major stakeholders who I just identified within the next few days, hopefully next week sometime, posting this larger document on the C4 page of the village website, but basically sending them the, a cover letter with the, you know, list of initiatives and referring them to the website for greater information, but also offering to come and present at their various board meetings. So, we think that this will really open up a dialogue and continue a dialogue with each of these, you know, important stakeholders so that they have a chance to weigh in on these ideas for perhaps the first time they're discussing it as a group together on their agenda officially, which is great. From that point, we'd like to give everybody till about mid-December to get back to us with, you know, the stakeholder feedback. And then, the, you know, C4 group will go to work once again with any revisions that, you know, and suggestions that the major stakeholders have, so that we can work on something that would be available to share with the, you know, larger public for their feedback, you know, sometime in January. But we are getting very, very close. Everybody's done a lot of work on this, and I'm happy to address any questions that you have right now about the list of initiatives or, you know, the process. But anyway, that's, that's where we are in a nutshell, and I hope to get out of the nutshell.
Thank you, Trustee Marshazka. Any questions or comments for Trustee Marshazka or C4? Other reports? Trustee Gallagos?
Just one more thing I want to add is I want to thank Ron and the Rekt Department for putting on some great Halloween events with the Drunk or Treat. I'm sorry, I missed that one. But I, I was very thankful that Ames invited us, along with Trustee Mateo, to participate in their Drunk or Treat, which I had a lot of laughs on, handing out the candy, and then somehow got a mysterious stomach ache after that. But I just want to say thank you again, and we're looking forward to the Chamber putting on their Holiday Stroll in about a month or so. So, we'll have more details on that.
Thank you.
I do have actually one more somewhat C4-related item, but the village has also got a survey going online about residential curbside composting and the potential interest for a program like that. So, that survey will only be open for a few more days. I encourage everyone who has not seen it yet to go to the website and take the survey. That's all I have.
Any other trustee reports? We do have need for an executive session this evening to discuss probable imminent or pending litigation, and to discuss the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of a specific employee or legal counsel. The board will not reconvene, and no final action will take place. I would ask for a motion and a second to adjourn to executive session.
So, seconded.
Motion by Trustee Mateo, second by Trustee Gallagos. Clerk Sol, please call the role.
Trustee Clarity?
Aye.
Trustee Koss?
Aye.
Trustee Marshazka?
Aye.
Trustee Mateo?
Aye.
Trustee Evans?
Aye.
Trustee Gallagos?
Aye.
Motion adjourned.
Beings adjourned.